About to get started, before we begin and call the meeting ordered, I did invite you to stand and join me in the pledge, and then Amelia Taldo will bring the invocation.
Lord, I pray for the protection of all the people of Springdale, and I pray for those suffering, and give you thanks for the beauty you have given us in every moment of today. And I pray, Lord, that our community work together for the common good, and that you help this council seek your wisdom, as we make decisions on behalf of our residents. Lord, help the city continue to prosper and provide an abundance of services and opportunities for all of our residents. In your name I pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Amelia. And with that, I will call this regular meeting in the Springdale City Council to order. This is Tuesday, June 25, 2024, and we'll start off by asking our city attorney to call the roll.
Clerk, maybe?
Oh, city clerk. It does say city attorney. Boy, you put it, you write it down wrong. I'll read it wrong. Go ahead.
Mayor Sprouse?
Here.
Brian Powell?
Here.
Amelia Taldo?
Here.
Jeff Watson?
Mike Overton? Here.
Mike Lawson?
Here.
Rex Bailey?
Present.
Randall Harriman?
Mark Fucharous? Here.
Here.
All right, thank you. We're at item four, comments from our citizens. If we have any residents that would like to address the council, we ask that you come to the microphone, clearly state your name and address. Please keep your comments brief, and understand that the council won't take action tonight on whatever you bring forward to them. Is there anyone that would like to address the council concerning an item that is not already on tonight's agenda? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to item five, approval of minutes. Counsel, if there are no changes or additions, I'd entertain a motion to approve them as presented.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion as second. All those in favor, please say aye. All opposed, same sign. Thank you. Item six, what's your pleasure on procedural motions, counsel?
Move A and B.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion for A and B. Okay, Denise, yeah, we're gonna, well, let's try this. Roll call, or, or, call, let's see, what did I say I was gonna do? Call for the vote? Call for the vote. When I say call for the vote, then that'll, that's... Been hesitating using that, because I didn't want to sound like I was on the planning commission.
Carry seven zero.
If you like it, yeah, well, planner likes it. All right, thank you all. Item seven, appointments and reappointments, and I'll read this resolution. Resolution making an appointment to the Springdale Airport Commission, and, Mike?
Goff is here.
Mike, thank you for being here. You're certainly welcome to come up and say anything if you like. You're not required to, but, but I'll, then I'll throw it to the council, and we'll...
I just want to say, thank you very much, Mayor and council, for considering me for the airport commission. I hope that I can do you a good job, and thank you.
The resolution be adopted.
Okay, got a motion as second. Any other comments or questions? All right, call for the vote.
Carry six one, I'm sorry, carry six zero with one abstention.
All right, thank you. And Mike, thanks again for being here tonight, and for your willingness to serve on the commission. All right, item eight is a resolution adopting the 2023 Washington County Hazard Mitigation Plan Update, or Plant Hazard Mitigation Plan. I'm not sure, I'll, I'll say update. I'm not sure that's right. And this is something we've been waiting on. We were, that has to be updated about every five years, and we, Washington County, didn't get it adopted in 2020, I think, is when it was, was it 2020, Colby, when we first noticed this?
2020 is when we tried to apply for funds, and they said you weren't able to do that until they had this plan updated. So we've been waiting until that point.
For a FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant, you can't, your, your county has to have a Hazard Mitigation Plan in place. So they've been working on catching up and getting that done, and now it's done, and we're good, we'll be good for another five years, if y'all approve this. So, so again, I've already read the resolution.
May the resolution be adopted.
Second. Okay, we got a motion as second to approve the resolution. Any other comments or questions? Anyone in the audience? All right, call for the vote.
Carry seven zero.
All right, thank you. And item nine, Planning Commission Report and Recommendations. I see Sharon is here instead of Patsy. Patsy's off this week. Welcome, Sharon.
Thank you, Mayor. We can put up the, the slides with the maps on them. The first item that we have is a rezoning request for a 10.39 acre tract located east of Parsons Stadium, south side of Emma Avenue, and west of Hayfield Street. This request is to rezone the tract from low-medium density duplex district to medium-high-density multifamily residential district. Oh, I'm gonna tell me that, sorry.
There we go.
The title reads, "Ordinance Amending Ordinance Number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the City of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning R24-19, certain lands from low-medium-density duplex, duplex district to medium-high-density multifamily residential district, and declaring an emergency."
So with the zoning being different around there, was there any opposition to it?
Not by planning commissioners. It was unanimous vote, nine to zero.
Any public comments on this, Sharon?
Any what?
Any public comments on this during planning?
Not from this one, not from, from citizens.
How, how do you get to this property?
There is an access off Sage, Sage Street, that's just over there to the east. There's a little, a little stub out to the west that's called Hayfield. And right now, that's the only access to that property.
And that MF4, Amelia, that's, okay, so there's not gonna be any MF16 at all around this, correct?
Correct.
No, several, a few lots down to the east, yeah, there's some MF16.
And how did the planning commission go on this one?
How did they vote? Unanimously for approval, nine zero.
I'll make a motion, the ordinance pass.
Okay, we have a motion as second to approve the ordinance. Other questions or comments?
Do you, do you know anything about how we, if this goes MF16, that's like apartments, right, basically?
Potentially. They could do up to 16 units per acre.
Yeah. How do we deal with the access to that property? Do we, we don't deal, we don't look at that during zoning?
Not during the zoning, because if, it would come with a development plan, because it does, it does have access issues.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, they'll have to, they'll have to address that.
Correct.
Do you know what's been discussed at all? I was in a meeting early on with the developers, but I don't remember, I don't remember a lot of conversation about access. And if you don't have anything, you don't, because it's not part, really part of what we're doing here. I was just curious.
But I think, I think they're aware that's, that's the biggest challenge for this property.
Right, okay, thank you.
And this is just a rezoning?
Correct.
Yes, it's just a, it's just a rezoning.
They'll have to come up with access. It could be, could, could be down that west side, potentially. I don't know if that private drive is an option. I, I don't know. But anyway, they, they'll have some options, yeah. Okay, we've got a motion as second. Anybody in the audience need to speak to this? All right, call for the vote.
Carry seven zero. I noticed it has an emergency clause. Is that because they're prepared to submit their development plan, or?
Potentially. I don't have confirmation of that.
Could the emergency clause be adopted?
But with, with the anticipation of pending actions, we put that emergency clause.
All right, we got a motion as second for the emergency clause. Denise, call for the vote.
Well, the emergency clause does not carry. It's five two, requires a two-thirds vote. Requires six votes for emergency clause to pass.
The second rezoning request is for a 4.43 acre tract located at 3377 West Huntsville Avenue, the south side of West Huntsville Avenue, west of White Road. This request is for a zone change from agricultural district to institutional district. The title reads, "In ordinance amending number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the City of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning R24-21, certain lands from agricultural district to institutional district, and declaring an emergency."
Sharon, can you, can you move the next, get to the map, please?
There you are.
Thank you. We had a motion to approve. Ryan?
Is this for the fire station?
Yeah, this is Station Four, relocation.
So...
Thank you. Chief, I think we're okay, hopefully.
So I don't know if... So Mayor, before we vote, and I don't know if this would be for you or Ben, but in the original or initial conversations, there was talk about possibly making an access to Emma off of that. Is that part of that still?
It's not part of the plan right now. There is an access easement, correct, Ben?
There is.
It could, it could be added later, but the fire department really doesn't, they're not pushing for it.
Yeah, there's an access easement down the east property line that gets to the property to the south, but it doesn't extend across the creek.
So an easement would have to be acquired to get to Emma?
That's right. That would have to be a street project someday in the future.
Actually, it's gonna be, I think, on the committee agenda next week for the, part of that access is coming off our parcel. I think it's coming to committee next week.
Yeah, I think he was talking about extending the road down to Emma.
But as far as the access off of Huntsville, though, that's coming to committee next week.
Okay. All right, any other questions? Anybody in the audience? Okay, call for the vote.
Carry seven zero.
Would the emergency clause be adopted?
Call for the vote on the emergency clause.
Carry seven zero.
Okay, Sharon?
The next is a rezoning request for a two acre tract located at 2377 and 2417 South 48 Street, the east side of South 48 Street, south of Cody Avenue. The request is a zone change from agricultural district to low-medium-density multifamily residential district. The title reads, "In ordinance amending number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the City of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning R24-22, certain lands from agricultural district to low-medium-density multifamily residential district, and declaring an emergency." Sorry, I don't have to do this, the planning commission. Apologize, I forget it.
There you go.
There it is.
Again, on this one, that planning commission, was there any opposition to this from any of the residents around there?
No, we didn't have anybody from the public come and speak out. And there was one, I guess it was a seven to one vote with one abstaining.
Okay.
Move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion as second to approve the ordinance. Any other questions or comments? Anyone in the audience need to speak to this one? All right, let's call for the vote.
Would emergency clause be adopted?
All right, we have a motion as second to declare an emergency. Call for the vote. I'll, I'll step in for our city attorney. That also, emergency clause passed, seven zero. All right, Sharon?
The next item is a rezon request for a 1.08 acre tract located on the north side of Members Lane, east of Sam's Club. The request is a zone change from thoroughfare Commercial District to General Commercial District. The title reads, "In ordinance amending number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the City of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning R24-23, certain lands from thoroughfare Commercial District to General Commercial District, and declaring an emergency."
Would the ordinance be adopted?
And what, what would be the point of going from C5 to C2? What is there in C2 that you can't?
Automotive services, actually. It's, yeah, it's permitted by right in the C2, so they want to downgrade.
Thank you. Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and second. Any other comment or questions before we vote? Anyone in the audience? All right, let's call for the vote.
Carry seven zero.
Emergency clause be adopted?
We have a motion as second for an emergency clause. Let's call for the vote.
Carry seven zero.
The next item is a rezoning request for a quarter of an acre located at 1205 Crusher Street, east side of Crusher Street, and the south of Fink Drive. The request is a zone change from medium-density multifamily residential district to light industrial. The title reads, "In ordinance amending ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the City of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning R24-24, certain lands from medium-density multifamily residential district to light industrial, and declaring an emergency."
Was that a second?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Got a motion as second. Any other questions or comments? Anyone in the audience? All right, let's call for the vote.
Carry seven zero.
Would emergency clause be adopted?
We have a motion as second for the emergency clause. Let's call for the vote.
Carry six one.
Last rezoning request is for 1.35 acres on two eight, two tracks located at 5065 and 5087 Bob, Bob Mills Road. The request is a zone change from agricultural district to low-density single-family residential district. The title reads, "In ordinance amending ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the City of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning R24-26, certain lands from agricultural district to low-density single-family residential district, and declaring an emergency."
Make a motion, the ordinance pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Any other questions or comments? Anyone in the audience? Okay, let's call for the vote.
Carry seven zero.
Would emergency clause be adopted?
Motion as second for the emergency clause. Let's call for the vote.
Carry six one.
Planning's last item is a conditional use request for a use unit 44, which is mobile vending unit, and a general commercial district located at 3054 West Sunset Avenue. I'll show you a site plan here in just a sec. This site plan, it shows the designated areas for the food truck, the parking spaces, and table and seating. The, the planning commission recommends approval of this request with the following conditions: Cannot operate between the hours of 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM. No obstruction of parking spaces required for the operation of any other use on site. Maintain on the site a minimum of three parking spaces designated for their use. If a health certificate is required, display the certificate in a manner visible to customers. No obstruction of pedestrian or motor vehicle traffic flow. No obstruction of traffic signals or regulatory signs. No vending upon a public way. No sound device that produces a loud or raucous noise in violation of city ordinance, or violate any other city ordinances in connection with the vending operation. Keep vending sites clean and free of paper and refuse of any kind generated from the operation of their business. All trash and debris accumulating within 20 feet of any vending stand to be collected and deposited into a trash container.
Is that unusual for a planning commission to put that many restrictions on it?
Not for a food truck. That, that's fairly standard for a food truck operation.
So how many food trucks or trailers, mobile vending units would be allowed on that area?
Just one under this conditional use. It would just be granted to this one individual at that location.
So that lot that they're talking about here, is that part of the property that's owned by, used to be Kmart? Is that part of all the same thing?
It is, correct. It's not part of the bank's property, but it, it is. It's the same property owner that has the old Kmart, some of the area right there adjacent to, to Sunset, and a lot of that commercial area, yes, sir.
So this vendor will have a contract with them for a certain term, time-wise?
I presume. I don't know that for sure, but the property owners did at least sign. We got written consent and approval from the property owners to go forward with this.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion as second to approve the...
I move the resolution be adopted.
Got it.
I second his motion.
It does, as I was about to say, we have a motion as second, thank you all, for, are there any other questions or comments by either the council or the audience? Okay, call for the vote.
Carry six one.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Sharon. We're at item 10, and it's, I'm gonna turn this over to Ernest to kind of set the stage, and then I think Chief Holt, you may, Chief Holt will be ready to answer some questions, or maybe give us a little added information at, at some point.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an appeal of the planning commission's denial of a variance for reduction of rear setbacks from 20 feet to six feet, and side setbacks from eight feet to six feet at 3545 Julio Road. The appeal, which is Red Page 42 in your packet, was timely filed, and is the property owner here? I believe there's photos in the packet as well.
They're on.
Hello, good afternoon.
Yeah, give us your, your name and address, please.
Juan, I'm here on behalf of 3445 Julio Drive, Julio Road, and we want to reduce the rear setback from 20 feet to six feet, and side setbacks from eight feet to six feet.
Okay.
For a building.
So the, so the image we've got on the screens shows you where the building is sitting now. This has already been constructed, but it's not, I don't think it's completely finished yet. But it shows you where the building is sitting now, and then you see the kind of pink line where the setbacks would be. Chief, you wanna, you wanna go ahead and talk to the council about what you brought to my attention earlier, right before the meeting?
Yeah, I, I can give you some perspective. The main challenge facing this particular building is that the, may meet the building code, but it does not meet fire code for setbacks. The reason we're strict about setbacks, realistically speaking, in the modern built environment, the greatest challenge to operational firefighting is structure-to-structure ignition. And so we don't want to encourage a situation where setbacks are encroached on being the norm. If I can muddy the water for you, the way that typically people overcome that, or a situation that could reduce that being a, an operational fire concern, is that the exterior be clad non-combustible. So I just wanted to get that out there. Ideally, the situation wouldn't exist, being substantially complete, and if, if there's a practical solution that would be acceptable to the fire department, it would be conditional on an exterior non-combustible material. Short of that, we, we can't support it.
You understand what Chief, Chief is saying? I mean, it's, you were, this was, this variance was denied unanimously at planning commission. I'm not sure, Chief, do you know if they had, if they had that information that you just gave us? Because I don't, I was here, and I don't remember it, about that option?
I was not at the meeting, but I discussed that with Gos and...
Are they aware, were they aware of the option before tonight, as, to your knowledge?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. Were y'all aware of the option that, that if you, if you wrap the outside of the building with some sort of non-combustible material, that council would still have to grant the variance, but it might, it might give you a better chance of getting it approved? Got it?
Understandable. There, there is a note in here. It says, I guess, Mr. Stith says, "My other comments are the fire department opposes a reduction of rear and side setbacks where the fire department has negotiated lunch residue code. They have asked for fire protection construction, such as cement siding and non-combustible soffits or small building sites." So that portion of what Chief was talking about is in the notes, aware.
Okay, thank you. Ernest, if the, let me do some what ifs here. If the council votes on this and denies it, would they, would they be able to come back with a, with a plan of non-combustible, or can, is it possible for the council to pass it with that stipulation, if they want to?
Yes, it is possible for the council to put conditions on the approval. If the conditional use is denied, the ordinance says they have to wait a year before they can come back, unless there's facts warning reconsider, warning reconsideration, or they can appeal circuit court.
Does anybody know if we have other scenarios in which setbacks are like this, that are acceptable?
My experience with the, you speak up, Chief-
My experience with the, you speak up, Chief, but my experience with the fire department is, is you don't, y'all don't usually support any setbacks like this.
I can think of one where we granted a variance, but what, and I was going to ask this question of these folks, but the significant difference in that vote, I believe, was that there was an existing building that was taken down, so they just built a new one on the existing footprint, maybe with a, but a little bit larger. So my question on this is, was there a building in this location before you began construction of this garage or whatever, what do you call it, a building? Was there anything there before you began construction at this, where this building's located?
No, there wasn't.
You just weren't aware that there was setback requirements?
No, we were not aware at the time.
So prior to the building and pouring the slab, was there a permit requested or done for this?
Okay, most likely not.
And how was Mike Shambly shaking his head, like no?
Shaking. To me, shaking is this. Nodding is this.
He was shaking, huh?
So do you recall, did we require the other situation that was similar to do, Jeff, do you remember, to do the non-combustible stuff? But going forward, we certainly should, according to the fire department.
I don't think it was even discussed at that, on that one. I don't even remember that being discussed then.
Six foot's pretty, pretty narrow, though.
It is, and I just, but the reason I wondered, you know, and I live in an old neighborhood, but we do have buildings that are in people's backyards that are, you know, six foot or less, so I just wondered what...
I'm sure mine are.
I know mine are.
A lot of those buildings are what's considered portable, yeah, they can be moved, no?
Mine is not.
I'm going to shut up.
Me too.
But mine's been there since nineteen sixty, so...
Mine's nineteen sixty-five.
So do we not have some new construction and maybe a different zoning type situations that have six feet or less now?
I don't think so, unless Sharon, unless some form-based codes or, I don't know if any of that.
Well, the example that comes to mind is the PUD. The example is the planned unit development, so sometimes they will, but there is so much strategic planning involved in those developments that there is, there's clear direction from the fire department during those plans that they've gone down to as low as a five-foot setback, but it's known from the beginning that there's going to be non-combustible materials and that there's a very close, critical eye from the fire department on those.
Possibly sprinklers, that kind of thing.
And form-based code as well. I know when I looked into building downtown on a lot, that they said there would be a five-foot setback.
Correct, correct. And we have, and the form-based code allows us to have requirements and restrictions on material type, so it also allows us a little flexibility to make sure that all those standards are met.
I understand, thank you.
Just a question for our chief, just more out of curiosity than anything, because I, would, would sprinkling also be an option that would, that would make the setbacks not as critical?
Possibly, but it would be significantly more expensive.
Right.
I'm okay with doing a condition where they have to meet the requirements for non-combustible siding or whatever in this particular situation. I'm not sure going forward, you know, depending on how this turns out.
Is that in the form of a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the appeal with the condition of the non-combustible building materials on the exterior.
In other words, overturning the Planning Commission's denial with that condition?
That is correct.
Could we, could we add to that, that their permit process has to be gone through with that condition in that, and so that they can monitor this? Not the non-flammable siding on it?
Mike, would you want to speak to that? Or I don't know what would, is, is there a way to trigger? I know what's already built, you may not be able to inspect the same way, but what's left, I mean, would, in a building, in a, some permit, or any permitting or anything like that?
If you don't require them to tear it down, they do have to get a building permit before they do anything else. If we put this stipulation on here, then certainly we'll make sure they adhere to that. We'll be testing, they'll be required to prove what's already existing as far as foundational issues, the framing and things of that nature, but we'll take care of all that.
Thanks, Mike. That answer everything?
Is this something y'all are willing to do, or the owner willing to do? Are y'all willing to, to put fire-resistant material around the structure so that it would be in compliance with this motion?
Yes, definitely.
Need to explain what that is. It needs to be brick or cement siding, et cetera.
Well, we've got it in here, there's notes in here, and the chief has alluded to it also, that it's fire protection construction such as cement siding. I mean, we're not going to tell them what to put on there, but it needs to be fire-resistant material.
My point is, need to be real clear to the applicant exactly what's required and how expensive that's going to be for their workshop.
And the bottom line is, if you, but Mike, if they get into it and can't do that, they haven't lost anything, they're still going to have to tear it down. Right, same result? Yeah.
And they need to be advised upfront.
Right.
That if they intend to do this, it's going to be an expensive process.
Well, it will be, but it needs to be fire-resistant, period.
Yeah, that's what we're talking about. We're just informing them so they understand fully. In order to do that, it's going to be expensive.
I think what they're saying is that you need to weigh your options on keeping the structure where it is and price what it would cost to make that, the exterior in compliance, or what would be more expensive, that or tearing it down and moving it to the right part of your property. So you weigh those two things and then whatever is best for you, but it could be that one or the other. You may end up deciding that tearing it down and moving it would be more cost-effective for you.
But if the council does, and we don't even have a second yet, but if the council does vote to, with these stipulations to overturn the Planning Commission and allow you to keep the building where it is with those stipulations, with those requirements, if you find you can't meet them, then you're going to have, then the building will have to come down. Or if they vote no tonight, or if they vote to uphold the Planning Commission, it'll have to come down. So those are the, those are the options.
And if you do take it down and you decide you're going to rebuild it, then you need to come to the city and you'll have to apply for a permit to do so.
So I don't know who this question's for, maybe Ernest or Sharon or Mike, I'm not real sure. Why is there such a big difference between a side setback, six foot, or eight foot, I'm sorry, and the rear setback, which is twenty feet? Why is there such a big difference? No, no one, no one really knows.
It's just, that's just in the standard building code.
That's the code? Is that the best answer?
Yeah, that's what we've adopted as a city.
Well, and that's based off?
National Building Code.
Yeah, right.
Well, I would like to somehow try to provide these people a way of having multiple options and let them decide in working with the Buildings Department, where I know that there was some discussions during the planning where they could actually reduce the size on the same slab and pull it back two foot without having to do a full tear down. So if they could work with Mike and his group and...
Well, if they do that, they don't need a variance. So either way, with Amelia's, with Amelia's motion, with the motion that's on the table, I think they would get those options, so.
Then second.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve. Any other questions or comments?
Can we state this motion one more time before we vote?
Sure. It's a motion to overturn the Planning Commission's denial of the variance request with the conditions being added that the exterior of the structure be of non-combustible materials.
And soffit, preferably.
And soffit.
So is there, does there need to be a time requirement on this? Because this could stay there for, like it is, for a while?
Well, it would turn into a code enforcement issue if they didn't, if it was approved. Well, either way, if it's approved with these conditions and they don't do it, then it turns to a code enforcement issue, and we can take them to court. Or if it's denied, then they have to tear it down or appeal to circuit court, which then if they don't, will become a code enforcement issue.
And Mike, the, the building permits they'll be required to get will have a, they'll have a timeframe, correct?
So there are other reasons for setbacks, I assume, besides just fire safety, such as neighborhood intrusion, maybe, if that's what you want to call it. No one wants a workshop right next to their property line, so that's another reason we have side setbacks and back setbacks. And I realize this is on Julio Road, and it's pretty much agricultural out there. However, I'm a little concerned that if we were to do this motion, such as suggested, we might be establishing a precedent that, hey, you know, you let these people do it by putting up the fire safety wall, why can't we do it? And the people next door, you know, have, wouldn't have any say in that, or if there was, if it was in more of a developed neighborhood, which this may be someday. This may be a developed neighborhood someday. So I think it's more than just fire safety that bothers me on this one.
Is there height restrictions? I know in my neighborhood, like when somebody tried to build a playhouse in their backyard, there was a height issue.
I doubt there's a problem on height restrictions, is there, Mike, on this? Or you may not even know.
We do have height restrictions, and based on the pictures, it doesn't look like it exceeds that.
The height restriction, the max is sixteen feet in SF two.
Okay, thank you. Evidently, this is okay with that, or they would have needed to ask for a variance for that as well.
We have a motion and a second.
We do. Any other comments? All right, let's call for the vote. There's a, that's a big backyard. I don't, I think I'm going to choose not to vote this time.
Okay, so fails four to three, so the applicant has thirty days either to appeal to circuit court or to remove the structure.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Or to scale it back to the appropriate setback.
I'm going to go ahead and open up Finance Committee. Item A is a resolution accepting the guaranteed maximum price for the construction of parking additions at CL Charlie and Willie George Park to twenty-twenty-three bond project number two-three BPP four, presented by Colleen Forford, Chief of Staff.
Thank you. As we discussed at committee last week, this is a construction management project that we entered into an agreement with Milestone Construction. This will add one hundred and thirty-five, potentially one hundred and thirty-five parking spaces for the price, guaranteed maximum price of nine hundred and thirty thousand four hundred dollars. We are looking at reducing that amount by thirty-five spaces. We have until August twentieth to make that decision, as we discussed last Monday. We received a great bid on this, as we discussed last week, about eleven thousand dollars per parking space is the going rate. We ended up, for the first one hundred, we're looking at seven thousand six hundred and eight. However, there are some additional bond projects that we would like to prioritize with the Parks and Rec Center, so we may exercise not to do the additional thirty-five spots.
Move the resolution be adopted.
Okay, we have a motion and second to approve the resolution. Any other comments or questions? Anyone in the audience? Okay, roll call. Uh, sorry. Call for the vote.
Carry seven zero.
Item B is a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute conveyance agreement for the acquisition of land from Arkansas Food Systems LLC for the senior center project, bond project number two-three BSC one, presented by Ben Peters, Engineering Director.
You may take it. As we discussed at committee, this would ensure that there is a emergency access between the new senior center and the Food Systems Building, and also a trail that goes across there as well.
May the resolution be adopted.
Second. Got a motion and second to approve the resolution. Any other questions or comments? Anyone? Okay, call for the vote.
Carry seven zero.
Item C is a resolution authorizing the execution of a professional services agreement for the testing surfaces on West Emma Avenue extension from Fortieth Street to Forty-eighth Street, and this is presented by Ben Peters, Engineering Director.
This is a contract with UES, formerly Greb, Hoskin, Barton Wyatt, for a value of one hundred and fifty-seven thousand three hundred and eighty-one dollars hourly, not to exceed for the extension of Emma Avenue over forty-nine.
Move a resolution to be adopted.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the resolution. Other questions? Anyone in the room? All right, call for the vote.
Carry six zero with one abstention.
All right, thank you, Amelia. Was that, that was it, wasn't it? All right, and item twelve, I'm going to turn it over to Ordinance Committee Chairman Mike Overton. Mike?
We have two ordinances come before the Ordinance Committee with both recommendations for approval. The first is an ordinance amending chapter one oh seven of the Code of Ordinance of the City of Springdale pertaining to Grading Erosion Control Manual.
I just wanted to start it off, there was a minor edit that was correcting. It referenced chapter, and it's in section D, I believe it's in your page one hundred sixteen, but it's just referencing back to chapter forty-two.
That's the, no real material change, just it was a referencing note?
Correct. Aside from that, we discussed it last week. If you have any more questions?
Move the ordinance be passed and approved? Move the ordinance be passed and approved?
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Any other questions or comments?
So in here, there's a lot of different verbiage in through this, talking about native plants, pollinators, grasses, all this stuff going on here. So from what I understand, when we met in committee, is that if anybody is going to bring in, or before people can do this type of reparation or whatever it's called, they have to get approved by the city with a plan, not only a plan of what they're doing, but making sure there is no invasive type of plant to come in, and how they're going to maintain it. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And how often, is there a follow-up that has to be done during that time?
It would be every five years if it wants to be continued, and that's usually just the amount of time that native plants take to come to fruition.
And also in here, it shows that in an area where it says turf, grass, lawn, it says that it shall be maintained at a height no more than eight inches. So in an area, and I'm just going to use the example over in Harbor Meadows, of that area where the trees were planted and the grass was grown up well above eight inches, that applies to this because it is a turf, grass lawn. Is it considered a turf, grass lawn in a common area like that?
Yeah, we added that definition since it wasn't defined as to what turf grass was. So what this allows you to do is allow native plants to grow over eight inches, just not turf grass. So you can't just not mow your turf grass.
Okay, I think we got a motion and a second. Other questions or comments? Anyone in the room? Okay, call for the vote.
There's no emergency clause in any one of these ordinances.
Okay.
The next ordinance we have is an ordinance amending Section 42-76 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Springdale, which concerning unsightly conditions on private property.
The edits to this one is just adopting what we just passed a second ago.
Move ordinance pass.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Any other questions or comments? Anyone? Call for the vote, please.
Carry seven zero.
All right, thank you, Mike. Item 13, Parks and Recreation Committee and Chairman Mike Lawson. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. We met last week with, we have one item before us. I'll go ahead and read the resolution. It's a resolution authorizing the purchase of new pitching mats at J.B. Hunt Park, part of the 2023 Bond Project Number 23BPP6, and it's presented by Chet.
Yeah, these are, for the six fields at J.B. Hunt Park, we're going to have, or we have them already, six mats that go in front of the pitching rubbers. You have 43 feet, 40 and 35, so each distance is protected by this mat, and it'll help with the wear and tear of that area.
Move a resolution be adopted.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Any other comments or questions? Anyone? All right, call for the vote.
Carry seven zero.
All right, thank you. I'm going to turn the next item over to our city attorney, Ernest.
Thank you, Mayor. The next item is a resolution, a resolution setting a hearing date on a petition to vacate a portion of Purcell Street, and it would set the public hearing for July 23rd. City Council and the city clerk will publish notices required by statute, and there's a map in your package showing the location to be vacated. We did something similar to this to the west on Putman Street last year. This resolution would just set the hearing date.
The resolution pass.
You have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Call for the vote, please.
Carry seven zero.
Thank you. And item 15, I'm going to turn over to our city attorney to get the ball rolling on this, kind of bring everybody up to speed.
Thank you, Mayor. If you'll recall, in, at the council meeting on May 14th, the city council passed Resolution Number 59-24, which authorized the city to purchase property located at 1403 South Powell Street. And at that discussion, at that meeting, it was, council was told that we would bring a lease back for your consideration, so that's what you have before you tonight. It's a resolution authorizing the execution of a commercial lease agreement with that go Rubber Products, Inc. on property owned by the City of Springdale, Washington County, Arkansas. And the reason it says on property owned is the lease wouldn't take effect until we actually owned the property, which would, the closing would be October 1st.
Make a motion, the resolution pass.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Are there other questions or comments?
Yeah, I have, Mayor.
Okay.
Just want to remind the citizens, this is a property that the city is going to purchase for $3.2 million, which is half a million dollars over appraisal, and this lease is for $0 rent. Fortunately, at least in the lease now, the LSE will be paying compensating the city for the property insurance on it. But one thing that's in this lease I've never seen, or never in any lease that I've been involved with in 42 years, this allows the tenant to sublease it at $0 also, which I don't know why that's in there, and it makes no sense.
Actually, it provides that they can't sublet it without our permission.
They said they could without.
Paragraph five.
Okay.
Tenant should not have a right to assign.
I apologize, and I misread it. I thought they, yeah, that said shall, and I thought it said shall.
Scared me.
Excuse me. I was.
No, thanks for bringing it up.
Ernest, you've been here a while. When's the last time that we purchased any land out there for it? I don't, 80s?
I know whenever we, now it was probably between 2000 and 2010 when we expanded the runaway protection zone.
To the south?
To the south. There was a property that we acquired, I think Joe Edwards might have owned it at the time. That's the last one I remember.
And then later, we cleared a lot of it. It was wooded, and we cleared a lot of it.
And just one more comment, too. This is a 60-year-old metal building, which is approaching the end of its useful life. There's going to be substantial maintenance required on it in the future.
Other comments or questions? Anyone in the audience? All right, call for the vote.
Carry five two.
Thank you. All right, do we have any comments from our department heads? Council? City Attorney?
Yes, sir.
I'm going to let you off easy. Nothing from me.
So moved.
We are adjourned. Thank you all very much.